Mr. Chairman, we are live.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'm going to call this meeting to order at 7:09 PM. This is a regular meeting of the Baldwin Park Planning Commission from May 26, 2021. Commissioner Garrido, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure thing, Chairman. Go ahead and please mute your microphones, placing your right hand over your heart. Face the flag if you have one there and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Garrido. Is Esther on the call today?
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Esther is out this evening, so I will be taking roll call.
Perfect. Ron, do you mind calling roll?
Yes. Commissioner Garrido?
Present.
Vice Chair Borcas?
Here.
Chairman Sens?
Here. Thank you so much, Ron. So at this time, we're going to go ahead and move on to public communications. Ron, have we received any communications or any comments from the public on anything in regards to what's not on the agenda?
No, we have not received any requests for public communications.
Great. Thank you so much, Ron. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and close public communications and move on to the consent calendar. I moved to adopt the action minutes from April 14, 2021. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is that Commissioner Borcas?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Ron, do you mind calling roll?
Yes. Commissioner Garrido?
Yes.
Commissioner Borcas?
Yes.
Chairman Sens?
Yes. Motion passes. Action minutes have been adopted. Going to go ahead and move on to set matters, public hearing. We're going to start with item number two, the request request for consideration to consolidate two existing single-family lots within the R3 multifamily residential zone for the construction of 12 lots, for the 12 lots of 11 attached condominium townhomes and one common area lot pursuant to table 152.10 in the city's municipal code. Location 13266 Ramona Boulevard, applicant Leo Wu, Archfield Incorporated, case number PR 20-33 and TTM 83328. Mr. Ron Garcia.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Associate Planner Melissa Chirprous will be providing the presentation.
Thank you. Go ahead, Melissa.
Okay, thank you. So, good evening, Honorable Chair and members of the Commission. So again, before you is a request for consideration of a tentative tract map to consolidate two existing single-family lots for the creation of 11 attached condominium townhomes and one common lot area located at 13266 Ramona Boulevard. The project is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pursuant to Article 19, Section 15332 infill of the SEQA guidelines. Therefore, an infill environmental analysis was required and is attachment number two in your agenda packets. Next slide, please. Okay, so the parcel is currently developed with a single-family home that will be demolished for the construction of the proposed project. The project site consists of two parcels with a lot area of approximately 0.59 acres, which equates to about 25,861 square feet. The lot is rectangular in shape and is generally flat. Next slide, please. The subject property's zoning designation is multifamily residential, R3, and the site is surrounded by multifamily residential zones and developments. Next slide, please. Okay, so the proposed project required the approval of a tentative tract map and a development plan design review to allow the proposed building, architecture and site layout. The site's general plan land use designation allows a maximum density of 20 units per acre. Based on, based on the lot size, the maximum project density is 11.8 units per acre. The site layout consists of six three-story, three-story units and five two-story units for an 11-unit townhome project. A single driveway is being proposed down the southerly portion of the project to provide vehicular access for the dwelling units along this route. Also, a common open space is proposed approximately in the southeasterly and westerly portions of the development between, as you can see here, between buildings two and behind, and building three. The total common open space being provided is 2,867 square feet. And, and the common open area space consists of a garden, an outdoor fitness area, an outdoor lounge and an outdoor barbecue area for all the residents to enjoy. So parking and circulation. So the part of Baldwin Park Municipal Code, Section 153150 requires two parking spaces per unit and one space for every three dwelling units. A total of 22 parking spaces will be provided for this development. Each unit will provide a two-car garage and an additional three spaces for guest parking. Based on the requirements of the municipal code, the project is required to provide a minimum two-car garage space per unit. The proposed project meets the parking requirements based on the Baldwin Park Municipal Code and a condition of approval was also included within the tentative tract back requirements that CCNRs, that a CCNR will state that parking or storage of any recreational vehicles is prohibited. Next slide, please. Okay, so the project proposes a Spanish architectural style. Architectural features include a hip-style roof with clay roof tiles, wall projections, stucco exterior with smooth stucco window trim finish, vinyl windows bearing in shapes, wood shutters and arched recessed doors as well. The combination of materials and architectural variations reduce the scale and massing of the proposed structures. The HOA will be responsible for maintaining the exterior, exterior of the buildings, including the garage doors and roofs. Next slide, please. Oh, can we jump? One more, David, sorry. So the applicant is proposing two different floor plans, each containing between three and four bedrooms and two and a half bathrooms. The dwelling units range from two to three stories with an attached two-car garage. Floor areas range from 1,424 square feet to 1,632 square feet of livable area. See, so as you can see on here, units, this was going to be the first floor and second floor floor plan for units one through five. So units one through five do have a floor area of 1,424 square feet with three bedrooms and two and a half baths. Next slide, please. And here we have the north and south elevations for building number two that are more towards the rear of the development. Next slide, please. Okay, and so for that building, building number two, we have here units six, seven and eight. Unit six, seven and eight are going to have a floor area of 1,632 square feet. It's going to have four bedrooms and two and a half baths. And this is one of the buildings that is going to be three stories as well. Next slide, please. Okay, and then the final building that will be seen off of Ramona Boulevard. This one is also going to be three stories. Next slide, please, David. And this is the first and second floor plan for building number three. And we have the final units, which are nine, 10 and 11. So the floor area for these three units is 1,546 square feet with three bedrooms and two and a half baths. Next slide. And we, here we have the floor plan for the third floor of building number three. Okay, and so, next slide, please, David. Oh, sorry. Okay, so noticing requirements. So I noticed a public hearing was posted on the City of Baldwin Park's website on Thursday, April 15th and April 21st. The public hearing notices were also mailed on those same days to our property owners within a 300-foot radius of the subject site and staff did not receive any letters of concern regarding this development. So to conclude, staff does recommend that the planning commission adopt Resolution PC 21-05 approving tentative tract map 83328 and PR 20-33 to facilitate this residential development. And the applicant is also present for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Melissa. Commissioners, any questions of staff? All right, see no questions. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Ron, have we received any communication from the public in regards to this? In regards to this matter?
No, we have not, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Ron. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions of the applicant or staff? Seeing no questions, I am going to go ahead and make a motion to adopt Resolution PC 21-05 entitled "The Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baldwin Park Approving a Tentative Tract Map to Consolidate Two Existing Single Family Lots for the Creation of Eleven Attached Condominium Townhomes and with One Common Lot Within the R3 Multifamily Residential Zone Pursuant to Table 152.10 of the City's Municipal Code. Location 13266 Ramona Boulevard, applicant Leo Wu, Archfield, Inc., case number PR 20-33 and TM-83328. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Is that Commissioner Garrido?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Ron, would you please call roll?
Yes, Commissioner Garrido?
Yes.
Vice Chair Borcas?
Yes.
Chairman Sens?
Yes, motion is, a motion passes 3-0. Congratulations. So we're going to go ahead and move on to item number three, "A Request for Consideration to Subdivide One Lot Into Seven, Into Six, Seven Lots Within the R3 Multifamily Residential Zone for Construction of Five, Six Attached Three-Story Residential Condominium Townhome Units and One Common Lot Pursuant to Table 152.10 in the City's Municipal Code. Location 4437 Stewart Avenue. Applicant Brian Chan for EGL Associates. Case number PR 18-76 and TTM 83377. Mr. Ron Garcia."
Thank you, Chairman. As indicated, this, this report represents the request for consideration of a tentative parcel map to subdivide the lot into seven lots for the creation of six condominium townhome units with one common area pursuant to the city's municipal code. The project is exempt from the provisions of SEQA pursuant to Article 19, Section 15303, and no further environmental analysis is required per the exemption. Notices of Public Hearing were posted at City Hall and also posted on the city's website on Thursday, May 13th and did not receive any notices of concern regarding the proposed project. Next slide. The parcel is currently developed with the single-family home that will be demolished for the proposed project. Again, you have Stewart Avenue and then you have Los Angeles to the south and then you have Belgate Street on the west. And again, the site includes one single-family structure. Next slide. The subject property's general plan land use designation is multifamily residential, which is consistent with the property's multifamily residential R3 zoning designation. The property is one parcel with a lot area of approximately 0.42 acres, which consists of 18,600 square feet in size. Now, the lot shape is rectangular in shape and is generally flat. The surrounding uses include single-family residences to the east, multifamily apartment units to the north, single-family and multifamily units to the south and single-family residences to the west. All right, next slide, please. The proposed project again requires the approval of a tentative map and a development plan design review to allow for the proposed building and architecture and site layout. The site plan layout consists of six three-story attached residential units. A single driveway is proposed down the southerly portion of the project to provide vehicular access to dwelling units. Again, the site is 0.42 acres in size and is relatively flat. And again, the site contains one single-family home. A common open space is proposed approximately in the center and rear area of the development between units two and unit three and unit six and includes a combined total of approximately 1,536 square feet of common area space. The common open space areas include decorative pergola barbecue area, a dog run area with picnic tables. A condition of approval, of approval requires city landscape plans prepared by a landscape architect for review and approval. In addition, per the municipal code, the project does require two parking spaces per unit and one guest parking space for every three dwelling units. A total of 14 parking spaces will be provided. Each unit will have a two-car garage and a total of two guest parking spaces for the project site. Based on the requirements, the project does provide a minimum of the required parking per the code. A condition of approval includes the CCNRs to include in the tract map that parking of storage of recreational vehicles, trailers, boats are prohibited in order to allow the guest parking spaces to be utilized for guest parking purposes. Next slide, please. The applicant is proposing two different floor plans, each containing between three and four bedrooms with three bathrooms. All of the dwelling units are three stories with an attached two-car garage on the first floor. Floor areas range from 3,044 square feet to 3,188 square feet of livable area. Again, this slide shows the first floor of type A, which includes a two-car garage, a bedroom, an accessible bathroom and then a staircase leading up to the second floor. Next slide. Here's the second floor. It includes a bedroom, your kitchen, your dining, living room and storage area. Next slide. And finally, the third floor consists of a den, a walk-in closet, a bedroom, bathroom, as well as the staircase leading to the third floor. Next slide. And here's the first floor for building type B and C. And again, you see the two-car garage with the staircase leading up to the the second floor and it also includes a den. Next slide. And here on the second floor, you see the bedroom, bathroom, living area, dining room and kitchen. And third floor. Next slide, please. And here on the third floor, you have a bedroom, bath, walk-in closet with the bedroom and also a bath. Next slide. So the proposed project here proposes Spanish architectural design. Architectural features include hip-style roof with concrete as tile material, exposed wood rafter tails, wood corbels and paneling, stucco exterior with smooth stucco window trim finish, vinyl windows with varying shapes, wood shutters and decorative wrought iron planter boxes. The combination of materials and architectural variation reduces the scale and massing of the proposed structures. And finally, the HOA will be responsible for maintaining the exteriors of the buildings, including the garage doors and the roofs. And again, here, this slide shows the proposed architectural design for building type A. And again, this includes the southeast and northwest elevations. Next slide. And this is building type B and C, which also includes southeast and northwest elevations. And you can see the articulation that's been proposed on these buildings to to complement that architectural Spanish design. Next slide. So as indicated, one of the requirements for the development is a tract map. The applicant is proposing again to subdivide the lot into seven lots. Six of those include the condominium units and the common area for circulation, guest parking and common open space. The common areas will be fully maintained privately by an established HOA. Further CCNRs will be required as part of the project as indicated to address any ongoing maintenance and upkeep of, of, of the site, including common areas, driveways, walls and landscaping. The site's general plan land use designation of multifamily residential allows a maximum of 20 units per acre. The proposed project density will be 14.05 units per acre and based on the lot size, the project density is 8.5 units per acre. And as you can see with this development, they are proposing a total of six units. Next slide. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission approve Resolution 2107 approving PR 1876 and tentative tract map 83377. That concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is also available for any questions.
Thank you so much, Ron. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Seeing no questions, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Ron, have we received any communications from the public in regards to this matter?
No, Chairman, we did not receive any requests for comment regarding this project.
Thank you so much. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions of staff or of the applicant? Seeing no questions, I now, I move to adopt a Resolution PC 21-07 entitled "The Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baldwin Park Approving a Tentative Tract Map to Subdivide One Lot Into Seven Lots to Facilitate the Construction of Six Attached Condominium Townhome Units with One Common Lot Within the R3 Multifamily Residential Zone Pursuant to Table 152.10 of the City's Municipal Code. Location 4437 Stewart Avenue. Applicant Brian Chan for EGL Associates. Case number PR 18-76 and TTM-83377. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Borcas. Ron, do you mind calling roll?
Yes. Commissioner Garrido?
Yes.
Commissioner Borcas?
Yes.
Chairman Sens?
Yes. Resolution PC 21-07 adopted 3-0. Thank you so much. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and move on to item number four, "A Request for Planning Commission's Consideration of a Conditional Use Permit to Modify an Existing Conditional Use Permit to Allow An Alcohol License Type 21 Beer Wine and Distilled Spirits in Conjunction with a Grocery Store Zone Pursuant to Table 153-070.020 and Section 153.120. Part II of the City's Municipal Code. Applicant Compass Commercial Group Grocery Outlet 4249 Main Avenue. Mr. Ron Garcia."
Yes. Associate Planner Melissa Chirprous will be providing the presentation.
Great. Thank you so much, Melissa.
Thank you. Okay, so again, before you is a request for consideration for approval of a conditional use permit to modify an existing conditional use permit to allow alcohol sales and alcohol license type 21 beer wine and distilled spirits in conjunction with the grocery store at 4249 Main Avenue, currently the grocery outlet. Next slide, please. On January 27, 2016, the Baldwin Park Planning Commission approved a conditional use permit to allow off-site sales of beer and wine, a type 20 alcohol license in conjunction with a grocery store. Next slide, please. So on behalf of the grocery outlet, Compass Commercial Group submitted a request for modification of the existing conditional use permit to increase from a type 20 to a type 21 alcohol license of of off-sale alcohol sales pursuant to Section 153120.050 subsection A of the Baldwin Park Zoning Code. Any establishment, business or facility that does not currently sell alcoholic beverages or request an increase of alcohol license type is required to obtain a conditional use permit. And a type 21 license will allow the operator retail sales of beer, wine and distilled spirits. Next slide, please. The applicant, applicant is not proposing to modify the existing site or floor plan, but staff did want to make a note of a minor change to the staff report. The staff report states that the applicant was not going to modify their hours of operation, which is currently seven days a week from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. But the applicant is now requesting to extend their hours of operation by one hour, having them operate seven days a week from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM. If approved, the staff will revise the resolution of approval, approving the time modification. Next slide, please. So to conclude, staff recommends that the planning commission approve Resolution PC 21-06 approving CP 21-03. And the applicant is present for any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Melissa. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Seeing no questions, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Ron, have we received any communication from the public in regards to this matter?
No, we have not. Chairman Sens?
Great. Thank you so much. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions of staff or of the applicant? Seeing no questions, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to adopt Resolution PC 21-06 as amended entitled "The Resolution of the Planning Commission to Modify an Existing Conditional Use Permit to Allow Alcohol License Type 21 Beer Wine Distilled Spirits in Conjunction with a Grocery Store Pursuant to Table 153.070.020 and Section 153.120. Part II of the City's Municipal Code. Location 4249 Main Avenue. Applicant Compass Commercial Group Grocery Outlet. Case number CP 21-03. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Borcas. Mr. Ron Garcia, will you please call roll?
Yes, Commissioner Garrido?
Yes.
Commissioner Borcas?
Yes.
Chairman Sens?
Yes, thank you. Motion passes 3-0. Resolution PC 21-06 as amended. Congratulations, grocery outlets. At this time, we're going to go ahead and move on to item number five, "A Request for Consideration of a Recycling Facility Within the Industrial Commercial Zone Pursuant to Table 153.050.020 in the City's Municipal Code. Location 3026 Fraser Street. Applicant Walter Gonzalez Reyes. Case number CP 892. This item was continued from, from the September 23, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting. Mr. Ron Garcia."
Thank you, Chairman Sens. Before we start, I just want to confirm that we do have the applicant present before I give the presentation. I, I'm not, Mark, if you can let in Blanca?
Can you hear me?
Okay, good. Is this Ezekiel?
Yes, sorry about the other name. It's, it's been changed. I think my wife used it just briefly. Yes, uh sorry about the other name. It's it's been changed. Uh I think uh my wife used it just briefly.
Okay, perfect.
Zoom account, but um I didn't have a chance to. I didn't notice that it was a different. Yeah, I'm here for any questions. I'm not the applicant, I'm the designer. I did the architectural plans and the uh uh architectural renderings for the applicant. Uh I understand he's uh also here um present. Thank you, Ron.
Perfect, thank you. Uh hold on one, uh if you could just bear with me just a minute, uh hold on one second. Thank you, bear with me. Just gonna set up the screen here. All right, perfect. Okay, thank you uh uh everyone. So um this application again uh represents a request from the planning commission for a recycling facility. Uh if you remember planning commissioners, this item was continued uh from originally from the August twenty six, twenty twenty meeting um uh uh for consideration. Um uh essentially provided direction to the applicant and recommended revising the project site. Um it was also then uh continued from the September twenty third, twenty twenty planning commission meeting to a date uncertain uh in order to allow the applicant applicant to continue working uh with staff. Uh so uh at the August twenty six, twenty twenty meeting, the planning commission uh recommended revising the project site. Um and that was to work with staff to explore relocating the existing Fraser Avenue driveway uh to Garvey Avenue. Um and just to uh go over what how the proposed project, I just wanna briefly go over um the request uh since a considerable amount of time has taken place since then, just to familiarize the commissioners again of the proposal. Next slide, please. So as mentioned, the the site is own industrial commercial, industrial commercial uh and is consistent with the commercial industrial general plan your land use designation. Uh vehicular access uh to the site would be provided via Fr- uh Fraser Street. And the subject property uh is approximately about fourteen thousand three hundred twenty eight square feet. Uh the property uh is currently an auto repair shop. Since this was uh first presented to the planning commission, uh it's my understanding that the auto shop has uh since uh been phased out uh on the property. The surrounding land uses uh include single family residences, uh the I ten freeway, industrial buildings and uh 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 and finally industrial buildings. Next slide. So per the municipal code, uh no more than one recycling facility can be permitted within a radius of three thousand feet uh and requires planning commission approval. Uh the applicant currently operates two recycling facilities in the city of LA and colle- collectively has almost twenty years of experience in running and managing recycling facilities. So the applicant has submitted a certified radius map verifying that the recycling facility adheres to those uh those standards. Um next slide. And again, this is just a basic floor plan um of the facility um which would allow for drop off um of recycling materials such as cans, uh glass, um uh aluminum cans and glass. Next slide. And again, as you remember, um these are the containers that are going to be located at the site um for storage uh of the recycling material. Um and just to, as a reminder, uh the applicant is proposing two full-time employees during the operating hours of seven AM to five PM Monday through Saturday uh and eight AM to three PM on Sunday. Um and again, those materials are gonna consist of aluminum, uh glass and plastic bottles. Next slide. So this is a a rendering of of the site. Um since the the planning commission uh in August, the applicant has revised the fencing as recommended by the planning commission uh to provide a more decorative uh type style of uh of fencing. So it includes wrought iron with the uh decorative uh solid base um along the exterior of the site. Next slide. And again, this is kind of an aerial view of what uh that would um what uh the site um will consist of with the those modifications. And again, uh just showing the decorative uh uh fencing uh along the the exterior of the site. Uh David, if you can go back to the site plan earlier. Yes, there we go. Thank you, David. So again, as recommended by by the planning commission, uh at that time, there were some concerns of uh exit uh egress and and egress to uh the site. Uh so what's occurred in working with uh the planning and engineering division um is that they've relocated the thirty foot wide driveway uh to provide more of a safe uh safer access uh to the site to and from closer to the alley. Um and uh another modification is that uh that they're proposing to demolish the uh the canopy that was at the center of the the site in order to allow for uh vehicular uh uh access uh within the site and and proper exiting um to the site. Um we, the applicant did explore within engineering staff. Um one of the comments from the commissioners was to possibly relocate the drive aisle to Garvey Avenue. Uh we explored that. Unfortunately, um the engineering staff did not recommend uh that option in that it uh it created a safety concern because of a blind spot, especially for those vehicles. So if you imagine car exiting off of Garvey, uh there is a blind spot to the east of oncoming traffic. Um so it was not recommended by staff uh to uh create an alternative uh egress and ingress. Um so alternatively, the applicant worked with staff to relocate the driveway on Fraser closer to the alley in order to to provide a much safer um access uh to the site. Um uh all in all, the the project um has been revised to improve the overall circulation. Uh the project proposes again to remove the canopy and modify the existing driveway. And based on those changes uh made to the project, the applicant has made an effort to address those those concerns uh as requested uh by the planning commission. Um in conclusion, uh staff recommends that the planning commission approve uh resolution PC twenty twenty approving the conditional use permit. Um staff is present for any questions. In addition to uh planning staff, uh the public works director is available for any comments or questions uh of the commission uh as well as the applicant uh Ezekiel. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ron. Um and I I think I'm just gonna make the comment. It is definitely a significant improvement and I appreciate the applicant for um kind of taking our our recommendations and and reworking. It's it's definitely a significant um improvement and I I I'm happy. Um and then also Sam, thank you for joining the call. Um I appreciate it. Um and thank you for collaborating with both planning and the applicant to find um to make this to make this a reality. Um but um commissioners, is there any questions of staff?
No, I mean, uh go ahead, Ed.
I uh thank you, Commissioner Grito. I just second what Chairman Science says, yeah, but uh great presentation and and changes. Go ahead, Commissioner Grito.
Uh I was just gonna say, yeah, I mean, now it 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 looks, I mean, it looks better if they're gonna push back that, you know, driveway a little bit more. Obviously, you only have, you know, one stop sign there. Um and that's coming from Garvey. Uh you know, the other stop sign would be at actually the off ramp of the freeway, I believe. So at first, it seemed kind of very, you know, just like those cars usually come zooming around that uh that corner there, depending on how much traffic. But I mean, if you pushed it back a little bit more, I think it makes more sense now than it did originally. So yeah, I like it.
Thank you very much, commissioners. Um so at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. Ron, have we received any communications from the public in regards to this matter?
Yes, Chairman Sense, um we did receive one uh uh request for public comment from uh John Reals. Let me just uh uh see if I can get him through now. Hold on one second.
Sure, thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Reals?
Yes.
Yes, uh you have three minutes regarding the uh conditional use permit request for a recycling facility. You can begin.
Well, one of the reasons is that it's very close to the neighborhood. We that are, you know, rats and stuff again, uh you know, with recycling. That's what happens, you know, and in the community right there, I don't think they realize or or they they said that they send them notices. There was a public, you know, to get involved with it, but I don't think they did. Because basically, most of the people that live there are retired people. You know, and it's a very quiet neighborhood, you know. But putting a recycler for why you guys want it, it brings homeless, it brings a bad environment for for the area. We have a good area right there. We don't wanna ruin it, you know. That gentleman that was running in and out, you know, a lot of times we had to call up and code enforcers would come on the weekends and stop their sales because they were taking up no permits. They is that the same person that's trying to get the permit? I don't think he's responsible, you know, when you try to do something underhanded. Okay, you know, and it's a bad area to put a recycler in it. Why don't you guys put it behind uh food for less? Is the building still there? Why don't they do it over there? Nobody's using it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reals.
Thank you, Ron. Um do we have any uh any other uh requests for comment?
No, Chairman Sense, we do not.
Great, um so um commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant or staff? Seeing none, um I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Um and I just have a question, uh question, Ron. Um in regards to to these um conditional use permits, do we have anything? I mean, it it seems um and it seems like uh something that the the applicant would just take upon themselves to ensure, but does does the conditional use permit require any um like? I don't know what to call like rodent mitigation protocols. Like, I I mean, like, is there anything that we can um plug into the conditional use permit to ensure that um there? I don't, I don't, I I I don't, I don't know the statistics on on recycling facilities and 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 um attracting rodents, but I imagine that it's it seems like it's very much possible. Um so is is that something? I mean, I don't know if a recycling facility is is regulated under like the purview of the health department. Like, I I guess what what can we do to ensure that um we are protecting the residential units um surrounding um the the site?
Yes, uh thank you, um uh Chairman Sense. Those are really good. That's a good question. As you recall, and I apologize, I should have made reference to that in in the presentation. Um but I'm referring, I wanna refer to uh a page, it begins on page uh three of uh of the conditional use permit resolution. But be uh uh because the way these uses operate, uh staff did um provide and button up some um some conditions in order to mitigate those potential issues. Uh just for the record, I'd like to just read those uh that are, read those conditions uh from the resolution. So for example, um I'll start with condition number uh ten. Uh the site shall be patrolled once per day to ensure cleanliness and security. Uh condition eleven, all recyclable materials shall be stored in containers or in a mobile unit uh vehicle and no material shall be left outside of the containers when attendant is not present. Condition twelve, any fluid shall be depo- disposed of in any water type container. The facility attendant shall have a five gallon supply of water during all times of operation to dilute any residual fluid mixture. Fluids may not be dumped on the parking lot. Condition thirteen, no power-driven processing equipment shall be employed. Condition fourteen, the facility shall be maintained free of vermin, litter and any other undesirable materials and will be swept at the end of each collection day and cleaned weekly. Uh condition fifteen, if the CUP expires, uh the recycling facility shall be removed from the site on the day of the following permit expiration. So a- all in all, uh these a- as as you can see, the conditions that I have read uh essentially help mitigate those types of uses. I've included these uh conditions in here based on my experience working with uh uh with these types of uses, recycling facilities in order to for it to operate um in a way that is um uh uh works symbiotic with the adjacent uh 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 uses. Uh they these conditions, uh for example, if there's an issue with the uh uh of any of these issues that I I've indicated, code enforcement could use this conditional use permit as a way to make sure that the site is being operated per the approval of the conditional use permit. So hopefully, I've been able to answer that question to you. Uh the applicant has accepted and they have agreed upon all the conditions of approval as indicated at the initial planning commission meeting um as well as uh tonight.
Great, thank you so much, Ron. Um and I I think um just I'm gonna clarify um point number seventeen. So um if, for whatever reason, this applicant um fails to to upkeep the site or is in breach of the conditional use permit after uh within a year or at at the the year anniversary, um if if any of these conditions aren't met, then this uh conditional use permit would become null and void.
So a condition seventeen essentially means that they have one year to to start the operation. So if they don't do that within a year, the the CUP approval expires.
Got it.
And the uh Mr. City Attorney can confirm this. Uh for example, if this, if they were to repeatedly uh violate the conditions of approval under the CUP, the city can uh initiate a revocation uh of the conditional use permit. And that is per the municipal code.
Got it. Um I guess I'll let the city attorney come in to um to confirm.
Yes, that is absolutely correct. In fact, yes, we can call them in for different kinds of hearings, compliance and otherwise whenever we deem appropriate, but um certainly we could. we could do that on a regular basis and and uh at the time of one year. Um, as Ron says, if there are significant violations, uh we can um revoke that permit.
Great, thank you very much, Robert and Ron. Um, obviously, I hope that we don't come to that, and I hope that this is a very successful business. I think that um I'm doing whatever we can, and I think I've been made this point many times um in our meetings that uh I I I really like this this use. I think that it's important in protecting our environment, and um this is one little step that we can do in our city to ensure that that we're protecting um our 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 environment. So I'm really happy for this this uh this use, obviously, um but I also am, I wanna be respectful of the surrounding uses. So um I really ask that the applicant um ensures that the site is is kept um as clean as possible and and um eh to to respect all members of the community. Um, so with that being said, I think I I've closed the public hearing. Um, so I'm gonna go ahead and uh make a motion uh to adopt resolution PC twenty twenty, a resolution of the planning commission of the city of Baldwin Park, adopting the findings of fact and approving a conditional use permit to allow for recycling facility pursuant to table one five three dot zero five O dot zero two zero in the city's municipal code, location three zero two six Fraser Street, applicant Walter Gonzalez Reyes, case number CP eight nine two. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Garito. Uh, Mr. Ron Garcia, will you please call roll?
Yes, Commissioner Garito.
Yes.
Commissioner Barquez?
Yes.
Chairman Sands?
Yes, um, motion passes three zero, resolution PC twenty twenty has been adopted. Congratulations, um, and thank you very much for your patience. Um, and then I guess we're gonna go ahead and move on to reports of officers. Ron, is there anything um, anything you need to to convey or?
Yes, um, so I just wanna remind the the planning commission of two study sessions. I know you've been, I've been bombarding your emails with reminders of a joint planning commission, really important dates for the month of June. Uh, Mel and I and the consultant have been working diligently with our consultant on the uh downtown specific plan and also the housing element. Uh, so on June ninth, uh, will be a presentation of the draft of the downtown specific plan on June ninth. That's a joint city council planning commission. That will be done via uh via Zoom. And then moving on, we have a housing element uh study session again with the council to present the draft uh housing element uh before that is sent to the state for review uh and and comment. Uh, and that'll be June twenty-third at six o'clock. Um, I I that is after the June fifteenth, that's like the big day. Um, I will be sure to um to advise you of whether that meeting is gonna take place via Zoom or it's gonna consist of a hybrid meeting where it's via Zoom or in person in the council chambers. Uh, so right now, um, that has not been solidified, so I'll make sure to uh keep you updated on that. But uh for sure, on June ninth, it'll be a uh a a Zoom meeting uh for that uh study session. Um, there's one more item. Yeah, I think, and and lastly, I just wanted to, um, I know we haven't had a planning commission meeting, but I wanted to thank uh Commissioner Edith Flores. Um, she did resign uh from the planning commission, but wanted to thank her for her years of service um that she's dedicated uh to the planning commission. So I wanna wish her well. Um, and unfortunately, didn't have, could, did not have the opportunity to have her present to thank her, uh, but I wanted to use this opportunity uh to thank her for her service. And that's all I have on on for uh reports.
Thank you very much, Ron. Um, um, so I guess I just wanna thank everybody um for for tonight's meeting and for everybody's patience. Um, it was a little bit of a, we had a lot of items, so thank you. Um, and so Rod, Melissa, Robert, Sam, Mark, David, um commissioners, um, thank you guys so much um um for tonight. Um, commissioners, any any comments before we adjourn tonight's meeting?
Uh, Chairman Sands, Commissioner Garito, God bless you and the kids. Uh, you know, I know it's, I I'm over here, you know, Mr. Mom. It's not easy. So you guys take care, you know, sending blessings your way.
Uh, certainly, everybody take care, you guys. Um, thank you so much, Commissioner Barquez. Um, so um at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting at eight oh three PM. Uh, do we have a second?
I will second your motion.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Garito. Uh, Mr. Ron Garcia, will you please call roll?
Yes, Commissioner Garito.
Yes.
Commissioner Barquez?
Yes.
Chairman Sands?
Yes, uh, so uh motion passed three zero, tonight's meeting has been adjourned at eight oh four PM. Uh, viva Baldwin Park.
Viva Baldwin Park.
Take care, everybody.
Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night. Bye.
Thanks, Ron. Thanks for all you do and the and the planning uh staff. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.